Fifth 2018 School Board meeting in order, our first one in autumn. And if you walk through the hallway, you'll notice that we made sure we adjusted the temperature to reflect the cooler temperatures of autumn in Florida. No, we have a chiller problem here as well, so we continue to work through those. But I do appreciate your patience with some of the warmer temperatures out in the lobby. Whether you are in attendance here or watching from another location, my colleagues and I are pleased you took the time to join us. We appreciate and applaud your commitment to partnering with us in support of our schools, our students, our staff, and our community. And while the board and Brevard Public Schools staff members are fully committed to doing our best to ensure excellence in Brevard Public Schools, we know that our success depends heavily on an engaged and committed community to work with us to continually improve. Thank you for being active participants. Pam, roll call, please.
Mrs. Belford?
Present.
Mr. Craig?
Present.
Mrs. Deskovic?
Present.
Mr. Susan?
Present.
And Mr. Ziegler?
Here.
Matt Reed, Assistant Superintendent of Government and Community Relations, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. At this time, I'd like to offer my fellow board members and Dr. Mullins the opportunity to recognize students, staff, or any members of the community. I think we started with Mr. Ziegler's. Mr. Susan, you want to?
Sure.
For anything up?
Should we allow Dr. Mullins to go first once in a while? I mean, he always goes last. I mean, we-
Last is good for-
I'll be the cleanup hitter.
All right. Okay. So, first off, I wanted to say thank you to many of the schools. I was able to visit Viera, Johnson, Sable. I was also able to Suntree and Longleaf. I was able to visit their faculties and move around the schools. Lot of really good things going on in all those schools. I will tell you that a couple of them have found some innovative ways to attract the SROs to keep coming back and sign up for their duties, like free lunch and some other stuff, because you know they're on that rotational basis. I did want to throw a shout out for Viera High School's football team, because they beat Cocoa for the first time in school history, and that's a pretty big deal. Both teams are, I promise, will go deep into the playoffs, and it was a shootout to the end. It was really, really great game under Friday Night Lights. I also wanted to say thank you to Harbor City for having a spaghetti dinner. And the best part was the spaghetti dinner dance, where they came down the center aisle, and they had all their spoons and everything else, put the energy inside there, and the fundraising was amazing. Brevard Cultural Alliance, we have a group of the artists that are within the community, and they lost funding last year to do our after-school programs where they bring in artists of residencies. And that's a huge hole for us to fill. So, we met as a board to try to figure out how we could fill that gap with other funds and stuff like that and fundraisers. We had an Innovation Day meeting. Looks like March 8th is going to be the day, and it's going to be next year. And Aviation Hangar was built at O'Gally High School, and it was said again, sorry to say this, but we had the EDC inside there, the only standalone aviation hangar program with aviation tech and pilots in the nation. That's huge, like, that's massive. And then NASA, we had the overall program where they're going to have the, they're going to tie all of our career and technical programs in with their, all of their, you know, Northrop Grumman and everybody else for our program. So, that's it. That's me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Susan.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. Longleaf got a huge award. I want to say congratulations to Longleaf for getting one of the three inside our county that you guys are going to stand up here in just a second. But Ms. Bias, thank you for everything you guys are doing over there. Great job. That was a really good award. Thank you. Okay, I'm done.
Ms. Deskovic?
I just have one. Last Monday, I attended the kickoff of the training through the Sheriff's Office for our new school safety and security specialists. There were 28 members in the class, men and women, and they were a very impressive group. I know we've had people in the community that have had some concerns about the quality of people that were going to make the cut. They have been vetted for literally months between psychological vetting and background checks and different types of evaluations, and they've weeded them down to 28. And we did a quick scan of their resumes, because the sheriff was there for the kickoff and had them raise their hands if they had military or law enforcement experience. And so, I asked them to total it up. And just for reference, between the 28 people in that room, they had 268 years of law enforcement experience, 211 years of military experience, 68 years of security experience, and 47 years of corrections experience. There were former FBI agents, firearms instructors, every branch of the military was represented there, FBI, CIA, Secret Service, former Secret Service. It's really a remarkable group of people that have stepped up, even left current careers to come and serve in this capacity to keep our children safe. And so, a shout out to the Sheriff's Office for the remarkable training that they're doing to the board for stepping out and coming up with a creative way to keep our students safe, and to those 28 men and women in that room that are going to be serving our students. Thanks.
Thank you, Tina. Ms. Belford?
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Had the opportunity and want to say thank you to our assistant principals at both of our alternative learning centers. I visited with them last Monday, and I would encourage you, my fellow board members, if you have not been out there, to stop by for a visit. They would love to see you. And regardless of what area you represent, you have students probably at both facilities, because they kind of tend to move back and forth when they have to. So, to Rebecca Teji and to Mike Waller, much appreciation for taking some time out of their day to show me around and explain to me a little bit about what we're doing and the changes we've made and that sort of thing, but would certainly encourage you to go out as well. On Tuesday of last week, Titusville Police Department, every single year, does a meet and greet breakfast for all of our administrators in the Titusville area. And it's a great opportunity to come together and just talk about challenges. Brevard County Sheriff's Office was there as well, all of our North Area administrators. And I attended as well. But Chief Lau has just done a phenomenal job of partnering with us in our schools and ensuring that we have coverage and great relationships with the officers, and so I certainly want to thank them for that opportunity. And then, Dr. Mullins and I had the opportunity to attend the Space Coast Junior/Senior High School First Annual Homecoming Parade, which was a ton of fun, and spent some time with the Vipers, and then hopped in our cars and headed north to catch, we missed the Astronaut High School Homecoming Parade, because it was at the same time, but we were able to join the War Eagles for their post-parade bonfire at Astronaut, and I had a great time with them. So, many thanks to them for allowing us to crash their party. It was a good time had by all. Also wanted to give some kudos to Tina Susan, who's the principal at Jackson Middle School. She had a community leaders meeting last week, and it is exactly what I have been preaching about and screaming about, and, you know, bringing everyone together and sharing our challenges and our strengths and what we can potentially offer each other and how we partner together. Great example of the fact that we are all going to either succeed together or fail together. You know, schools are so intertwined with every aspect of our community, and that opportunity to just come together around the table and talk about all of those different things was awesome. So, many thanks to Tina for doing that. Had the opportunity, as I mentioned to you all, Hummingbird Pantry, that supports so many of our schools, our students in need had their fundraiser over the weekend and had the opportunity to be the judge there for their burgers and barbecue event. So, thank you to them for allowing me to participate and for all that they do for our students. And then, Dr. Mullins and I on Sunday joined the Churches One in Titusville for the Lives on the Line rally, which was an awesome event. It was multiple churches and community members coming together to pray over and provide encouragement for our first responders, police, fire, Sheriff's Department as well. Had the skydivers come in with the American flag. It was really, it was a great event, and we certainly appreciate all of the support that they give to our first responders and all of the work that our first responders do with our schools on a daily basis. I'm almost done, I promise. Want to give a kudos to Dr. Sullivan and to Ms. Archer and to Joseph Flora, Principal of Madison. Very excited, if you all didn't see it in your superintendent update, that Madison is getting an academy, STEM-related academy, doesn't have its catchy name yet, but it's coming. Oh, I'm getting a thumbs up, we have a catchy name.
It's a good one.
Excellent. Can you shout it?
Innovate with an eight.
Ah, very nice. So, certainly something that Madison has needed for quite some time to give them an edge in the North Area. I'm excited for the opportunity for the students, and that'll give us kind of a feeder pattern from the new steam school at South Lake. Also want to say thank you to Dr. Mullins and to the staff for working out the discount for the SROs on the aftercare that we had discussed last meeting. I appreciate you working through that and figuring out a way to make that happen. And then, the last thing is, I would like to say thank you to this board, because once again, as I'm out talking with leaders at all of these schools, I am constantly being told what a blessing it is for them to have social workers in their schools, and what a difference it's making for their staff, for their teachers, and for their students especially. So, thank you to all of you for supporting that initiative. I appreciate it. I'm done.
Thank you, Ms. Belford. Mr. Ziegler?
Well, I only have one thing, and you touched upon it, Mrs. Belford, is the children in need had their big event Friday night. I was told that they raised $105,000 before the night of the event, which is, for those out there, these are much, this is the realtors in Brevard that come together to do this to support our children in transition. And this district, as last I was told, is tracking close to 3,000 children in transition this year, which is amazing. And that money helps to go service these kids that are having challenges in their lives. So, thank you very much to the realtors for doing an amazing job.
Thank you, Mr. Ziegler. Just real quick, at the beginning of every meeting, I kind of read a statement that I adjust a little at times, but really, the meat of it is that we depend on an engaged and committed community to help us be better and continually improve. Over the last week or so, I think we had a perfect example of that. We had a parents that actually lived in Satellite Beach, I believe, that identified an issue with some lighting that we installed at the Merritt Island Pool and brought forth a recommendation and a solution and helped us work through it. And then, with leadership of Sue Han, the new head of facilities, we're able to come to a conclusion and get the pool lighting where it needs to be, so that we now have, or will have in the near, very near future, the ability to swim at night. And so, it's that type of partnership and commitment that we look to, to our community, and we thank you so much. So, Jeff and Michelle Barrows, if you are watching or anything, thank you very much for your commitment to making us better and for bringing forth solutions. And thank you to Sue and your team for working together with our community to make sure that we give the absolute best and excellence to all of our students wherever we can. Dr. Mullins?
Well, first, I'd like to echo Ms. Belford's acknowledgement of the Lives on the Line Community Rally at Sandpoint Park in Titusville Sunday evening. It truly was just a phenomenal demonstration of what community is about, community pastors and residents coming together and acknowledging, recognizing, praying for our first responders, Titusville PD, Titusville Fire Department EMT, and our Brevard County Sheriff's Office. It was just such a huge positive evening. I had the privilege of meeting with our SGA, our Student Government Association student leaders, last week. I have to tell you, the future of our community is in good hands. Such an impressive group of young men and women. I would remind the board that these are the young people from last year who went to Tallahassee, represented our community, to our legislators, challenging them to look for more funding for mental health services and supports in our schools, and believe that the resources, the dollars that were allocated, not only to Brevard but across the state, in a large part as a result of our students' work, and looking forward to those same kinds of leaders being a huge positive voice in our community. We talked a little bit, I introduced the Real Men Wear Pink Campaign at the last board meeting, so I was able to engage the student government leaders in that conversation last week. And I might have, I might have committed to a cabinet versus the winning SGA fundraising group in a kickball game at the end of the, well, I don't know, we're still talking about that.
Dodgeball's good.
I'm not sure I like the headline on that one, Superintendent throwing the ball at kids in dodgeball, but we'll at least do, we'll at least talk about kickball. But I get the privilege of starting the camp, kind of the pre-campaign launch tomorrow. I go visit Palm Bay High School, and the fashion design kids there have an array of pink ties for me to wear. I've committed to wearing a pink tie every day the month of October in recognition for the fight against breast cancer. And I'll be posting it on Facebook, stay tuned. If you are so inclined, would love for you to contribute to this great cause, and got to find a way to auction off those ties and recognize our kids. But I met with Ms. Glenn from Florida Today the other day, and I will tell you, she sold me out. And from what I, she's already been out talking to our kids about this initiative, and she said, be prepared, there may be glitter and sequins in your tie future. So, stay tuned, it's going to get, it's going to get interesting. So, Palm Bay High, Rockledge High, Viera High School, even Madison Middle School, I challenged some middle school students when I was there for the STEM activity to make some ties. There was a young lady who was into sewing, and so, Mr. Flora has told me last night that his students are ready to give me pink ties. So, I'm excited about that. And I would like to let the board know, we have in our boardroom this evening, future educators. I believe individuals who are going to be before our kids in no time, helping inspire them to reach their potential and their future. We have several Eastern Florida State College aspiring educator students in our meeting this evening from our Melbourne and Palm Bay campuses. Did I get that right?
Aunt Coco.
Aunt Coco, all right, thank you. We appreciate you being here tonight, and we are excited to see you go through the process to become a teacher. If there is anything we can do to help you find the way and bring you back to this room to be approved, to be a teacher, let us know, because you're our future. We appreciate you being here tonight. Two more things, want to recognize Jeff Arnott. He just received the 2018 President's Award from ACE of Florida for his outstanding commitment and dedication to adult and community education. This really is a big deal in the world of adult ed, and I certainly want to congratulate him for his efforts for our community. And last but not least, a little bird told me that today just might be our Rachel Horst's birthday. So, it's her birthday, and who knows, before the night is over, she may have her first child on her birthday. So, we'll, there she is. Happy birthday, Rachel. That's it for me, thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. And that brings us to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Mullins?
Dr. Mullins.
I'm trying to find every, am I, okay, there we go. Mr. Craig and members of the board, on this evening's agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, one recognition, 12 consent items, one action item, and nine information items. You also have the yellow supplemental agenda, which are changes made to the agenda since being released to the public. Item A7 on administrative staff recommendations. Agenda item F14 on instructional staff recommendations. Item G22 on purchasing solicitations and information. Items H23 through H31 on school board policies. 3211, 3210, 8210, 8800, 8810, 5772, 7217, 2240, and 2520 all receive revisions. Item F15 on critical teacher shortage subject areas for 2018-19 is in addition, and item F16 on suspension of instructional employee is in addition with a subsequent revision. There is also board discussion item added on RSM audit findings.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. Where the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
I believe that was moved by Ms. Duskovich, seconded by Ms. Belford. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins, would you please let us know about the administrative staff recommendations?
Yes, Mr. Craig, there are two persons on this agenda item for the board to consider.
Is there a motion to approve?
Is that moved?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Belford, seconded by Mr. Ziegler. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins.
Well, first, please join me in congratulating Ms. Teresa Benson on her reclassification transfer from the position of short-term teacher at Ralph Williams Elementary to the position of assistant principal at Viera High School.
Thank you so much for your recognition. This is quite an honor. For the past seven weeks, I have been an interim teacher, sixth grade math. Amazing children at Williams Elementary, so I wanted to thank and shout out to Wes Harold for giving me the chance to get my foot in the door, to be a part of Brevard County. This is my home now. And Mike Alba, the principal at Viera High School, has graciously welcomed me onto his staff, and I am excited to work in the Viera community. So thank you so much for this honor.
And we also want to take this opportunity to wish DJ Cronell all the best on her upcoming retirement effective at the end of this year.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and I have a few people I want to thank. First, I want to thank Martin, my boyfriend, who has endured those long days and late nights and listened to me when I come home to talk about my day, or at least pretended very well to listen to me. So thank you very much. And I want to thank Jane Klein, my friend, the support, I can't look at her, my support personally and professionally. She knows when to push me and when to step back. She's been there for me for 25 years. Love you like a sister. Thank you, Jane. Dr. Mark Mullins, my mentor, a coach, a colleague for the past 12 or 15 years. I have the utmost respect for you. You're going to do great things for Brevard County, so thank you very much for everything you've done for me and the board, the opportunities, the support that you've given me. I just truly, truly appreciate it all. But most of all, I want to thank all the staff, all the teachers and administrators of Brevard Public Schools and everything they've done, the district staff up here, my Ella team. It's, Dr. Mullins mentioned at our staff meeting this week about how the staff of Brevard Public Schools supports our kids and sparks their hopes and dreams. And I'd like to say one thing and share with you the impact on one family that Brevard Public Schools has sparked all of their dreams. So real quick, I'm going to have to read. So postmaster, attorney, contractor, aerospace engineer, construction manager, educator, environmental engineer, financial analyst, musician, accountant, a stay-at-home mom of three, which I think is the hardest of all these jobs, two currently attending college, one in engineering and one in child development, and just this year, beginning in kindergarten, fourth generation, went to his first day of school, and when he got out of school, he called grandma and quoted, "I had the best day ever." So from the bottom of my heart, I want to just say thank you to all of Brevard Public Schools, not only for allowing me to share and serve 31 and a half years with students, but for sparking the dreams of four generations of my family. So thank you very much.
You will be missed greatly. That moves us into our recognitions. Dr. Mullins.
Item B8 is to acknowledge the programs and teachers recognized by the Florida Department of Education and the Florida Alliance for Arts Education at the FAAE Leadership Summit held June 21 through 23 in Fort Lauderdale, Florida. Introducing our presenters is Dr. Stephanie Sullivan, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Leading and Learning.
Good evening, thank you. Tonight, we are honoring exemplary dance, music, theater, and visual arts programs in our district who have received the Florida Arts Model Schools designations for 2018 through 2021. We are very proud to announce, since the inception of this award four years ago, 17 of the 40 schools designated statewide are Brevard schools. Assisting with the presentation of awards is Lucy Hertz, K-12 Visual Arts and Theater Content Specialist, and you'll see quickly where I stole her from to take that position, and Cindy Johnson, K-12 Music Resource Teacher.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. Dr. Mullins, Mr. Craig, members of the school board, awards recipients, and audience members. It is a great honor to stand before you tonight and recognize our Florida Arts Model Schools. The Florida Department of Education supports a complete and comprehensive education, which includes dance, music, theater, and visual arts for all Florida students. To help achieve this goal, the Florida Department of Education, in partnership with the Florida Alliance for Arts Education, seeks to identify strong arts education programs throughout
The Florida Arts Model Schools program recognizes schools that offer exemplary programs in any of the four arts disciplines and partners them with underserved or emerging schools desiring to either enhance an existing arts program or implement a new arts program. This is the fourth year for the FAMs program. It has replaced the Music Demonstration School Award and the Visual Arts Demonstration School Award. Dr. Mullins and Mr. Craig, would you please come down, come forward to present the awards to our honorees? Award recipients, please remain standing in the front for a group photo after the presentation. Receiving the FAMs designation for visual art, Longleaf Elementary School, Principal Dr. Kimberly Bias, visual arts teacher at the time of the designation, Lucy Hertz. Longleaf will partner with Turner Elementary.
Guys, can we take a picture?
We're going to do a group photo.
Receiving the FAMs designation for dance and theater, Ronald McNair Magnet Middle School, Principal Jasmine DeLauder, dance teacher Penny Conwell, and theater teacher Lisa Hill. McNair will partner with Gulfview Elementary. Accepting the award on behalf of Principal DeLauder is Assistant Principal Tammy Brock.
Receiving the FAMs designation for music and visual art, Saturn Elementary School, Principal Janice Rutherford, music teacher Joni Slosson, and visual arts teacher Tracy Lawrence Asby. Saturn will partner with Cambridge Elementary. Accepting the award on behalf of Principal Rutherford, our assistant principals Kathy Garros, excuse me, and Sean Vest.
If I may, Mr. Craig, I was doing some quick math, and 17 out of 40 schools across the state is over 40% of the awards brought home, and Brevard only has less than 3% of the kids across the state. So similar to our days of the music demonstration, we dominated that award, we're dominating again with the new award. So very proud of our performing arts folks.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins, and congratulations again. We are now at public comments. We have less than 10 speakers signed up, so we will jump right into the section regarding that. We don't have to adjust school board policy. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. We have a clock in front of me to help you keep track of your time. Time is over, you'll hear a doorbell sound, and you'll be asked to stop and allow the next speaker his or her turn. Please keep in mind that reasonable decorum is expected at all times. Your statements should be directed to the board chair, and the chair may interrupt or terminate a participant's statement when the time is up, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Should an individual not observe proper etiquette, the chair may request the individual to leave the meeting. We do encourage an environment appropriate for our children, who may be present or who are watching from home. And we will begin with the first three speakers. Please, before speaking, state your name, the organization you represent, if any, and identify the topic you'll be discussing. We'll start with Anthony Calucci, Vanessa Skipper, and Ronald Bradley. Oh, sorry, Mr. Bradley, not yet.
Are they?
Nope, not yet, sorry. Mr. Calucci first, you're third.
I'm first.
No, you're third, you're third. Mr. Calucci, Ms. Skipper, and Mr. Bradley. Thank you. Sorry. Sorry for the confusion.
I'm waiting for you to get them, John, don't start.
All right, my name is Anthony Calucci. I'm the president of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. Your teachers are disappointed that you canceled negotiations again. I don't think it will be a surprise to tell you that they're going to be furious if you come back after two months with a bunch of rejected proposals and an abysmal salary offer. Dr. Mullins, I do appreciate you wanting to find out more from teachers about how to recruit and retain teachers, but I got to save you some effort here. Our teachers need more money, and they need more time for planning. Nearly every one of our proposals is about money or planning. If you want to recruit and retain teachers, simply say yes to our proposals. School board, if we're unable to come to an agreement on salary at the table, and I will not bring an offer to our teachers that isn't competitive, one of the things a special magistrate will look at is what's happening in the contiguous counties. It's no secret, so I've given you the information to look at, and I was going to review some of that with you. First of all, just to give you a 10-year picture, there's a page in there that says inflation at the top. Over the past 10 years, inflation has been totaled 19.6%. You look at this one that says historical perspective, our raises have been 17.25%, not including what's going to happen this year. You'll see four years with no pay increase, and there's actually a fifth year where one-third of the teachers did not get a pay increase. From the DOE, it shows the average years of experience in Florida. You'll see that Brevard is second with 13.88 years of experience. And if you look at the next page, those are our average salaries in Florida, and you'll see that Brevard is $1,150 behind the average, even though we are the second-most experienced workforce in the state. And we are 21st in the state, although I do think there is a typo with the very first school district. And then the last thing I gave you is the contiguous school district settlements, and if you accuse me of putting it into red to draw attention to it, then I am guilty. You will see that last two years, Indian River County has done better than us. Last two years, Orange County has done better than us and has an over $2,000 raise this year. Last two years, Volusia has done better than us, and they have proposed 2% and $350 bonus on the table. We've done better than Osceola, they did get a 2% raise this year. Seminole, they've done better than us the last two years. This year, they had a 0.86% raise. So that's what I'll be looking at, that's what hopefully a special magistrate won't be looking at, but I wanted to front-load you guys with this information as we head back to the table, so you know what's going on elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Calucci.
Can I say something, John, real quick?
Yes.
Mr. Calucci, thank you for this. You don't have to, there's nothing to ask. I just, I appreciate having something to look at, facts in front of me, and something to analyze when you are up here presenting to us. So just thank you, I appreciate it.
Vanessa Skipper, Ronald Bradley, James Spade.
Good evening, Dr. Mullins and member of the board. I wanted to make sure that you were aware of a serious issue that we have brought to the attention of the district and will be bringing to the bargaining table as well. In Chapter 10, 12.22, Public School Personnel: Powers and Duties of the District School Board, it states this about advanced degrees. "A district school board may not use advanced degrees in setting a salary schedule for instructional personnel or school administrators hired on or after July 1, 2011 unless the advanced degree is held in the individual's area of certification and is only a salary supplement." The only thing we can do about legislators who craft ridiculous legislation that disregards teachers is vote them out. However, we can do a better job here in Brevard County. For example, I'm lucky enough to have my pay as part of my salary since it was before 2011, but my master's is in English education, so I get the pay bump if I had gotten it after 2011, since I'm certified in English. When school was started, I was approached by a teacher who has a master's degree in science education and is teaching physics and chemistry. She was told by the district that she could not receive a master's supplement because her master's was not in her area of certification. The last time I checked, chemistry and physics were science subjects. Even a simple Google search would tell anyone that. In fact, I searched the BPS website for high school graduation requirements and found that to meet the three-credit science requirement for a Florida high school diploma, a student could take chemistry and physics to satisfy two of those credits. In fact, in parentheses, the district strongly recommends that these courses be chosen to meet the science credits. There are some other issues that we have, and I'm going to give you a couple of examples. A teacher wrote, "I am a teacher with a master's in educational technology and digital learning. My coursework directly relates to my media specialist certification, but I am not getting paid for my master's. Instead, I was told that I needed to get an engineering certification that has nothing to do with the master's that I received, except that it contains the words 'and educational technology' in the title of certification. The content does not match my master's at all." Another teacher said, same science situation, "My area of certification is in physics, and I am teaching physical science courses. I fail to see why my degree doesn't qualify, especially since it was accepted by other school districts in the state, Palm Beach County Schools, Broward County Schools, and Miami-Dade Public Schools. Our teachers are earning graduate degrees. We can't do anything about the ridiculous legislation that was passed and signed into law 80 days after Rick Scott took office, but we can do something about the way we interpret the law. The DOE allows you guys to interpret the law, and I feel that we are using a ridiculously strict interpretation that we do not have to, especially since other districts aren't." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Skipper. Dr. Mullins, can you take that for some action and brief the board on our graduate supplements, please? Thank you. Ronald Bradley. Ronald Bradley, James Spate, Arthur Christiansen.
I get my time up till later, so do I get six minutes for next time? I got some other things to do.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bradley. James Spate, Arthur Christiansen, David Hardy.
Hello, piece of power, everybody. My name is James Spate, twenty-year Air Force veteran. My son goes to Holland. I'm not really good at public speaking things, so I'm glad I only got three minutes, because I'm already freaking out, sweating, and nervous. But what I want to talk about is safety, security. I left San Antonio, well, I left San Antonio November fifth, two thousand seventeen. There was a shooting at Southern Springs Baptist Church, and we had twenty-six people killed. Four months later, on February fourteenth in Parkland, Florida, seventeen people was killed in the school shooting. And then, you know, I'm thinking about it, it shouldn't be, that should be our main concern. You know, we have at least about three or four cops probably in here. We normally have like one or two at the school. So I go to the school the other day, and we was running late. I overslept. I go through the back door, go through the back where we normally go, and the door was locked. So the door was locked, and then we was given to leave and get on the bikes and go back home, get the car, and we were going to, I was going to take my son around to go to school, but I noticed a back door wide open. I said, you know what? Twenty years in the Air Force, security was really big for me. I just told my son, you know what? Just go through the back door. He goes through the back door, and the door was a teacher's classroom, the lights were off. Now, everybody in here probably have kids at school somewhere, but the lights were off in the classroom, the door wide open, nobody in the classroom, nobody questioned how did my son get into the front, because you only have one entrance. So normally when I go in, the SRO is at a little bitty desk in the corner like he's on punishment or timeout, and, you know, I videotaped it. If anybody want to see it, I'll show it to you. The dude got his, he got his shades on top of his head, and this is what he's doing. I got it on tape. And so I'm just really, like, confused. You know, the biggest thing which we worry about is school security. One of my favorite books is by Michael Dorn. Dave Grossman, I think, he did the foreword on it, one of my other favorite kernels. And it's talking about, and it's called Innocent Targets, When Terrorism Hits Our Schools. You know, we got to be more careful with that, man, because if something happened to my son or to any of you guys, I mean, you think about it, most of the time, these school shootings are in schools that are nice. My son is the only black kid in his classroom, and most of these school shootings, let's face it, they're normally at good schools. And a lot of these schools are Caucasian schools. You know, we really ain't doing it, so it's like white-on-white crime. Let's face it. So we really need to, we need to start paying more attention to these schools, because safety and security is everybody's responsibility, not just the principal, not just the cops, not just the SROs, it's everybody's, even the teachers. She left that door unlocked. If my son had have got hurt, it would have been a problem. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Spate. First of all, thank you for your service and for bringing that to attention. Dr. Thedee has already gotten up, and she is walking towards you there. If you can kind of talk to her, I can assure you that the board and the district continue to keep security as our number-one concern. We've spent a lot of money and a lot of time, but we know we can do better. And so Dr. Thedee, who oversees all of our district security, would like to probably meet with you and get some specifics, so we can continue to try and improve.
I'm not going to, I'm going to, I'm going to.
Gotcha.
I'm above the, I'm above the.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, sir. Arthur Christiansen, David Hardy, and Bonnie Martin.
I have six envelopes, their concerns, what I want to talk about, you know, I first have to present to the board. Thank you.
My name is Arthur Christiansen, twenty-two fifty Windsor Drive, Mayor Allen, District Two, next to Stevenson School. There was also, this is anti-Christian once, but you never answered that. Two weeks ago, I spoke about Stevenson School continuously, wasting school dollars and bullying the neighbors. Well, it's still going on. Two weeks later. Two weeks ago, I spoke to you about corridor busing. Brevard County spent one million dollars for a controlled intersection at Martin Boulevard Banana River Drive to improve safety. If buses turn into Martin Boulevard, they will be one-tenth of a mile from Stevenson School without obstruction. Instead, they continue and turn into the uncontrolled intersection of Girard, with congestion, limited vision, over the bridge, more congestion, down Windsor Drive to Stevenson School. Maybe they're looking for the little old ladies trying to get through to a different school to pick up a child. I want my family safe, and safety should be taken seriously by the school board and superintendent. The envelope that I gave you contain a copy of Florida State laws and pictures of six Brevard County school buses that parked in a row in front of our residence, blocking driveways, mailboxes, traffic signs, keeping us prisoners in our homes, because we're going to get out. These were corridor buses. Each photograph identifies every Florida state and federal law by paragraph violations. In other words, crime, because crime is an act violating a law prohibiting it. The envelopes also contain a map of your land behind Stevenson School and a road going to it from Banana River Drive. Why don't you use that and stop, and stop creating problems in our community? We want a safe community.
Thank you, Mr. Christiansen. David Hardy and Bonnie Martin.
Hello. Thank you for your time. I represent Longleaf Elementary and my child's classroom. I just wanted to bring to the attention of some of the events that the parents are discussing. I do acknowledge, you know, all the facts aren't understood. A lot of this is just parent discussion and concern, but we, there, our teacher has been out a little bit, and we wonder what's happening. There's rumors of things happening. Ms. Kofkin is the teacher. The concern is, for one, how, how events are paid attention to, what, like, cause-and-effect of, you know, a pattern. You have a twenty-plus-year teacher that has an impeccable record, and, you know, all of a sudden, things are going bad. Not, you know, just why, why are punishments happening? What's going on? So parents start talking, volunteers start talking, social media starts going, and so I just wanted to kind of ask the board, ask the process, you know, how, how is, you know, a perfect career paid attention to and all of a sudden it starts changing? With, you know, why? And we kind of understand there were some events that happened that, when you hear what happened, it doesn't sound like a lot of sensitivity was given. It doesn't sound like attention to cause-and-effect and how situations should be handled. This is affecting our classroom. That's why the parents are talking about it. It affects my daughter. She wonders, you know, why certain things are happening in the classroom. There's discussions about how the process is going, how teacher coordination is happening. It's a whole lot of, you know, rumor kind of bad stuff that, again, we've, I'm a two-generation parent. My daughter, one daughter went there the whole time, that now my daughter's in fourth grade. So the point is just trying to raise attention to a good teacher that is having some things happen, a classroom that's having things happen, and possibly a school that's having things happen, and just what can be looked at, what can be evaluated, checked out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hardy. And Ms. Klein is right behind you there, against the wall. Mr. Hardy, Ms. Klein is back there, and if you, she's raising her hand, and she would love to, I think, chat with you. And, Mr. Christiansen, I'm waiting for Dr. Thedee to come back. I'd like you to speak with her. I apologize, but she's with the other gentleman, and so as soon as she comes back, I'll ask her to speak with you as well, so we can get some better fidelity on that. I'm sorry, Ms. Martin, please.
Good evening. I'm Bonnie Martin. I'm kind of in the same situation as him. My daughter is in fourth grade at Longleaf, and there's definitely, again, we don't know all the facts, but something definitely is going on. She loves her teacher. I love the teacher. She's flourishing in fourth grade. Seems to be some sort of issue. The teacher is being reprimanded quite a bit. She's missing school. So our biggest concern is that if we have a almost thirty-year teacher who's been at Longleaf for twenty-one years, seems to be something going on. I don't want to lose a good teacher. I don't want my child to be stuck with a substitute for the rest of the year. So we're just trying to make light of the situation, and hopefully something can be done about it where we don't lose good teachers. I understand there's seventy-something teaching positions available in Brevard County. So if we lose a good teacher over some personal issue at the school, I just think that's crazy. So that's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I think Ms. Klein will also speak with you, if you don't mind, please. Board wishes to thank this evening's speakers. Your willingness to speak to the board is greatly appreciated. And, Mr. Christiansen, as soon as Dr. Thedee, we're going to continue on at the meeting, but as soon as Dr. Thedee walks out, I'll ask her to come and speak with you at that point. That moves us into the consent agenda. Dr. Mullins.
Excuse me, there are twelve agenda items under this category, one with prior information.
What are the wishes? Thank you, Dr. Mullins. Does any board member wish to pull any item? Yes. Is it sixteen? Hang on. Yes, sixteen. Suspension. That's F-16, suspension of instructional employee. Pam, would you please pull F-16 for discussion? Any other items that a board member would like to pull? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent items with the exception of the item that was pulled for discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Ms. Belford. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes five-zero. Mr. Ziegler, your poll, your motion.
Motion moved to approve.
Moved by Mr. Ziegler.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Belford for discussion. Mr. Ziegler, your discussion.
So I had no intention of pulling this until I heard from the speakers that this teacher has been out already for missing school and is going to serve a day of suspension on the twenty-eighth. It seems that the suspension is already in progress. I'm confused as to how that works, that we're going to give one day suspension three days from now, but I'm assuming that they're still out and going to be out until they serve the day of suspension? The process confuses me. Does anybody have an explanation to how that works? Or is a teacher actually at work but not in the classroom? And the parents maybe?
I would ask Mr. Lewis to come up and address your question, Mr. Ziegler.
It's really a process question, because it just doesn't flow logically to me.
Yes, sir.
So this teacher is out of, is on leave?
No, sir.
No. So they're still working in the school, just not in the classroom?
I'm not sure what the speaker was referencing when she said that the teacher has been out. She is still at school, from my understanding, and the suspension is to take effect once the board approves it.
Okay, that was what I originally thought, was that they're working, but they're going to have to take a suspension day, but according to the parent, they're not in the classroom. So could you look into that? We'll prove this, but could you look into why they have that perception?
Yes.
That just doesn't sound right.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm okay to call the question if nobody has anything.
Any other discussion? I'll call the question. Pam, do we have that electronically?
Yes.
Yes, we do. So call the question, please vote.
Mrs. Klein may know the answer to that.
Motion passes five-zero. We'll move on to the action agenda. Dr. Mullins.
Mr. Craig, there is only one item under this category this evening. G-22 is on purchasing solicitations.
What are the wishes of the board?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Ms. Belford. Is there any discussion?
No, sir.
Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes five-zero. We'll now move on to the information agenda, which includes items for board review, and will be brought back for action at a subsequent meeting. No action will be taken on these items tonight. Dr. Mullins.
There are nine items under the information category.
Does any member wish to discuss an item?
No, we already did that.
Some of them, for two hours. Hearing none, we will move on to board member reports and discussion points. There's just one discussion point on there. There's an RSM audit that was provided, I believe, yesterday, and so it is public. The audit was requested by the board after a complaint through the whistleblower program, which we think is a great program, and Ms. Enval, thank you to continuing to make that even stronger. We take, obviously, all those things seriously. And so through that audit process, we have come up with, or our audit partner, RSM, has provided us with a summary of findings. We, the board, have had about twelve hours to review it. We've looked at it. We can say that we are strongly in favor of continuing to follow board policy, and we know that we have some work to do on tightening our own policy, but there is things that will continue to occur. This is just the first part of the investigation, is the audit itself, which was just focused on the individual issue. Dr. Mullins, do you have any further comments?
Mr. Craig, I would just echo your comments. The audit findings did cite some board policy that needs to be reviewed. I'll be working very closely with Ms. Enval to determine what needs to be brought forward to the board, of course, conferring with the board, ultimately working toward clarifying that process, and then very quickly tackling administrative procedure to follow that, to ensure that we have tight controls and processes in place to hold us accountable moving forward.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. Yes, and the board does recognize our responsibility to approve all salary differences and changes, and we take that very seriously, and will continue to make sure that we have the correct processes, policies, and procedures in place to do so. Dr. Mullins, does anyone else have anything to report?
Two seconds.
Your two seconds are never two seconds.
The, our VR Growth Group met again with Suhan, talked about some pieces, and we were looking, possibly, I think we said before, in October ninth. But I'm going to send you guys out a real quick minutes on to what we talked about inside that meeting, for you guys to start thinking about, so we could start trying to bring in some board direction. Just, that's all.
Excellent. I appreciate you leading that, Mr. Susan. I know it's in your district, but it affects the entire county, so thank you very much for making sure that that happens. Dr. Mullins?
Nothing.
Nothing? Anything, have any more business to bring before the board? There being no further business, and Mr. Christiansen, Dr. Thedee has not returned, I will go. I will go back after this meeting to make sure that she comes out and speaks with you. Being no further business, this meeting is now adjourned.